Meeting to order at seven oh six, roll call please.
Councilmember Bernhard.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso, oh, Mayor Protim Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Aparano.
Here.
And Councilmember Obeso Martinez is absent for the record.
All right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And. Stacy, you want to lead us, please?
Yes. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the law. To the people of the county. To the citizens. And to the people of the citizens. Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there are no exceptions.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, anything to report on closed session?
Yes, the council discussed the old post office real property negotiation and instructions regarding price and terms were given to the agency negotiator. The council also discussed our public employee performance evaluation of the city manager and direction was given. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. With that, moving on to public comments, there's a time limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the city council on these matters. So with that matter not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand, be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor returns right to place a time limit of three minutes to each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the city clerk's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. Do we have any public comments? Yes, sir. Why not? Microphone's still not working, so. But we can.
So I have to speak up here?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Gonzalez, uh, twenty-three, twenty-seven, Brookwood Imperial. Uh, I'm just here to, to comment on our autism fair. It was a great success. We had over two hundred runners at the five K. A lot of them signed up last minute as Tony predicted and his team. Um, we estimated over seven hundred people, um, showed up. Um, and it was, it was a great time. Everybody had great fun and I wanted to thank, uh, the city, the council members, everybody involved. Tony's teams actually did a lot of hard work as well as, as my team that did, did a lot of hard work. And so I just wanted to kind of report on that. I know I'm not on any of these seats. I thought that I should give a report at least. I think some small part, so really thank you from our hearts, from autism support. Allowing us to do this every week means a lot.
Thank you very much and, uh, we did get to attend and just the support that was there from the community. It was good to see, um, people from all over the valley, not just the city of Imperial. So it was a great event and we definitely look forward to next year.
Can't wait.
Thank you guys. Thank you all for the hard work.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, moving on to presentation. We're gonna have proclamation. Presentation for Community Development Week. This will be for Mr. Ocon Mora. Uh, I'll read the proclamation and we'll go down there and take a picture. Yeah, gotta do it. All right, so it says National Community Development Week is a annual event that celebrates and provides the opportunity to reflect on the value that federal community development brings, funds bring to the community and whereas this year marks the fiftieth anniversary for the Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG, program that highlights the program's significant impacts on local communities and whereas the CDBG program is funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to provide local governments with resources to meet the needs of low and moderate income persons and provide essential funding for neighborhood improvements, economic revitalization, and affordable housing. And whereas the CDBG program has made a significant impact in our community by providing the city of Imperial with funding for street and sidewalk improvements, housing rehabilitation assistance, and first-time home buyer assistance. And whereas the city of Imperial, city council recognizes the importance of programs such as CDBG and acknowledges the hard work of individuals and groups who contribute to building stronger and more vibrant communities. Now therefore, I, the mayor, Robert Aparano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim April first through the fifth, twenty twenty-four, as National Community Development Week in the city of Imperial, passed and adopted on the seventeenth day of April twenty twenty four at a regular city council meeting. Thank you very much for all the hard work and we'll, uh, yeah. I'm gonna applaud. We'll go down, grab a picture. Rest of the crew. That's you? Solo?
Solo.
Well, sir. Very much. So. And then, like, say something?
I'll, I'll make a point. Um, I just wanna highlight a couple things, um, that were possible through the city to fund, uh, through this program, we were able to, uh, obtain one point four million dollars for cycle improvement. And that was on the lower five of the city of Imperial. That was on, along Fifteenth Street, uh, at G and H Streets. Um, the project alone, uh, transformed the, the daily condition for many of our people. Uh, we were also able, uh, for, um, any housing we have on Seventh Street. Um, this funding was very instrumental to updating the property to make complete the safety standards. Uh, and fastly, uh, we scored a first-time home buyer's loan, they, I mean, uh, he opened the doors to homeownership and many other businesses as well. Um, thank you for your attention and support. Not sent my pledges.
Thank you for all the hard work. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next one we have is for a proclamation, proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So, you can be YouTube?
Thought we'd do the whole thing.
All right, good. So I'll read the proclamation and then, you know, we'll come up and then we'll go take pictures and do that whole thing, so. So the city of Imperial proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Uh, whereas the second week of April is designated as the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and whereas the annual observance honors over a hundred thousand public safety telecommunications who work diligently in emergency communication centers across the nation. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, is dependent upon dispatchers maintaining a calm demeanor while communicating with citizens who are experiencing traumatic situations. And dispatchers must rapidly and accurately gather and relay information to first responders. And whereas the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week provides an opportunity to recognize the hard work, resilience, and commitment of telecommunications who often work behind the scenes, providing lifeline to those in need. And whereas the city of Imperial City Council wishes to thank our local Imperial County Sheriff's Office dispatchers for providing excellent service and unwavering dedication to the city of Imperial and for their diligence and professionalism that keep our city and citizens safe. Now therefore, I, the mayor, Robert Aparano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim April fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Imperial, passed and adopted on this seventeenth day of April twenty twenty-four at a regular city council meeting. So thank you very much for that. So really appreciate it. So if we can move, we can come down, take a picture, then we can, you guys can take the. The days are. Thank you very much. Thank you. I know. All right.
One, two, three.
I'll take one too. Thank you guys very much for all, all the hard work. I mean, you guys are the first. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Council, mayor, thank you very much. Much appreciated. Communications way, uh, as you stated, they go through a lot. Sitting on the end of the phone, hearing an emergency call, hearing, um, tragedy happened right in front of them. They're not out there. We are kind of gifted as police officers because we're out there. We find a resolution and we solve it and figure it out. Either take someone to jail or talk with them. And we see the ending. Not knowing the ending, it's a mental, it, it, they take a mental, uh, stress out of it, you know, they, they behave professionally. They, like you said, they take that calm and they provide with the services, whether it's storm coming through, an accident or accident, lights going out. Let it be an earthquake and everybody calls nine one one. It's like, it's okay, it's only, it's been all five, we're good. You know, but that doesn't stop people from calling you. And which is, this is part of our dispatchers, not all of them can make it. Obviously, some are working and others are sleeping, getting ready to come in. Uh, but really, we do appreciate it. We receive donations from different areas, um, different companies. They've been provided lunch and dinner pretty much every day this week. Tomorrow, they're gonna go to Yuma to tickle.
Skate.
To, to play in the skate room. So a little something, you know, it's really appreciated. Uh, everybody provided the least you see there. It's really, nobody really knows them because they're the boys behind the, the park. Uh, but here you are, you get to see them, you get to meet them, and I really appreciate them coming out and taking that. Uh, thank you.
Thank you both. Podium's open if you guys wanna come step forward.
I just wanna say thank you for the recognition. Uh, my, my team worked very hard all throughout the year and some of our four years. Uh, it's a, it's unfortunately a job that is very hard, very stressful, so not everybody can do the job. So my team doesn't really get that much recognition. Obviously, you know, we, we go through the year and, you know, they, they get, um, a lot of recording people, parties that, um, are not, they're having a worst day of their life, most of them. And so they, like the chief stated, they hear a lot of tragic things happen. Uh, it could be, it could be really stressful. So not everybody can do the job. So, uh, the group of people that we have, uh, we should take care of them because it's, it's getting harder and harder to, you know, to, for somebody that is willing to do the job or shift work and, and do everything, all the sacrifices that come with the job, obviously. In any law enforcement, uh, job, it, it just comes with, with a lot of sacrifices, family time and so I really appreciate, you know, you guys taking the time for, to recognize them and to show them appreciation. Because they really don't hear that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the council?
Uh, just a brief one. Um, you were talking about treating them to a night out of fun. You may wanna consider smash rooms too, because there is a lot. Let it out. I've just acted for almost twenty years. I, I can guarantee that, uh, finding a way to get that stress out is gonna be incredibly helpful to all of you mentally. And thank you for all you do.
Yeah, thank you for your service. I mean, there's no way in the world I could do your guys' job, so hats off to you. So, thank you.
No, just thanks for your commitment to the job you do and I know when you call in the middle of the night, they don't always wake up like they should, so.
And now I'll follow that up by saying thank you very much. I know that, um, your guys' commitment to the city of Imperial and making sure our residents are taken care of, that our public safety is taken care of is, is the crucial and big part of that. So, um, just a big thank you for the, for the hard work and the professionalism you guys drink for. So, thank you and you guys have a good rest of your week. Enjoy that. You know, it's well deserved. All right. Well, thank you. All right, moving on. So we'll do a consent agenda. All items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without, um, any dis- without discussion. Should any council member or any other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at that time as determined by the mayor. So with that, um.
We'll make a motion to approve, but pull items number one, one, six, six, and five, six, three, seven on the consent agenda. One is for James Tucker and one's for Robert Aparano. There's one more. Can I just leave it on there?
You can do that too.
Okay, and this one that's still on there is for Councilmember Mendoza.
All right, so I got a motion? To make a change? Yeah.
Yep.
I made, I made motion. Second by Mr. Tucker, so please vote.
Councilmember Bernhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Abstain.
Councilmem- uh, mayor, Mayor Protim Tucker?
Yes.
And Mayor Aparano?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, three, zero with one abstain from Councilmember Mendoza.
I'll make the motion to approve warrant number one, one, six, six, which is for James Tucker. I'll make a second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Bernhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Tucker?
Abstain.
Mayor Aparano?
Yes.
Motion carries three, zero with one abstain from, uh, Mayor Protim Tucker.
I will make the motion to approve warrant number five, six, three, seven, which is for Robert Aparano. Second.
The motion is second, please vote.
Councilmember Bernhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Aparano?
Stain.
Motion carries, um, three, zero with one abstain from Mayor Aparano.
Thank you very much. Moving on to action items, C one. Approval of special event application submitted by the Department of Homeland Security for the Imperial Valley Law Enforcement Relay Run. That'll be Mr. Lopez of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's that time of the year again where, um, the Imperial Valley Law Enforcement Relay Run is gonna take place. It's right around the corner. Um, the Department of Homeland Security has submitted an application for the event. Uh, they, uh, as part of the application, they would request that the city council approve the, uh, consumption of alcohol within the park. Uh, they use Basile de Sol Park as their endpoint, gathering point after the race. Um, and it would be a carding service that would just be exclusive to the participants of the race. It would not be for sale to the public. So, uh, this application, uh, is here to the city council for that approval of not only the application, but even, uh, allow alcohol.
Do, do we have a date?
Yes, the date for the race is nine eleven.
All right. Any, any questions?
And we do have Angela Hernandez here to, uh, speak on behalf of.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, well, this one, I have a little video, like I showed you guys last time. If you could play that, or may I talk first? I'll play it first, so you guys can kind of see, like, a video explains way more than I can, so if you could play that. We all, we run the race during National Police Week. And so we were, that's why it's, and I was kind of warm. It was like, why are we having it when it's hot? But we only do this race during National Police Week. Only law enforcement officers, firefighters, and military can run the race. And then they carry a baton like you guys saw in the video and they choose what opposite, what opposite they wanna run in honor of. And they carry that baton throughout the race. So this year we have, uh, twenty-two teams, so two hundred and twenty runners. Um, last year we had twenty-six. Uh, we were blessed with Mr. Aparano's presence last year. He came out and, and joined us in the beginning. And so you got to see like how the part became a part of it. Um, and then the race, we start at six in the morning, so we do kind of try and beat the heat. Uh, hopefully we'll have good weather that day. And then obviously, um, we're at the park, we're only there for like two hours. And it's, of course, after you run a couple miles, it's nice when it's hot to have a joy, a beer or two. And so that's why we're requesting that from you guys on, on Saturday, maybe eleven, probably from like nine to eleven in the Basile de Sol.
Look forward to seeing, being there again, so.
Right.
Good event, yeah, bright and early, right and early. Uh, any questions from the council?
No, I saw the comment. Uh, I really appreciate all that you guys do. Uh, my late husband's name was on one of the batons one year and so was my cousin, so. Every time I see you guys, it's, if you can go check it out, it's, it's a really amazing event. I mean, I from, you won't leave opening ceremonies without tears in your eyes.
Yes.
And yeah, so it's amazing. And thank you for all you guys do. And I know it means a lot to the families, uh, and I'm, but that'll make the motion. Thank you. It means a lot.
I'll say it.
And if I could just make a quick comment. I, I know that video is probably a one that was made some time back, but if you ever.
No, this was just last year.
Have you ever updated? Can we put Officer Fornell's picture in there?
Yeah, so, um, also we ran for him a couple of years back. So those are the officers that we ran in honor of last year. So if someone's in honor of him, we do put the picture. I think he was on our videos. This one was last year. Um, the one I showed you guys in two previous years was like my favorite, but it was like from five years ago. But I love that video, so I'll, I'll show you guys this year. So it was, it was really short, but yeah, those are the officers that they ran in honor of last year.
Well, like I said, I look forward to being there this, this year again, so. So with that, I got a motion from Ms. Bernhard and a second from Mr. Tucker, please vote.
Councilmember Bernhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Aparano?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to a great event. Moving on, item C two, approval of the second amendment to the Imperial Police Officers IPOA Memorandum of Understanding to clarify language regarding holiday pay calculations for calpers and those of you suspect.
Good evening. Uh, we are requesting the approval of the proposed amendment to the IPOA Memorandum of Understanding. The amendment, uh, clarifies language within Article fourteen of the MOU specifically regarding holiday pay calculations for calpers and has been discussed with IPOA incentives. This amendment will not change the current way that the city calculates holiday pay for law enforcement staff. The purpose is to provide calpers clarification to understand our existing practice and to outline specific details they require for their records. Uh, the clarification will state that for officers required to work on designated holidays, their payroll will be reported as holiday pay at a rate of two and a half. Uh, will be reported as their regular shift under. Uh, will be reported as their regular shift under regular earnings, one plus one point five times their, uh, base rate of, of pay under special compensation. This amendment ensures that all other provisions within the current MOU and its first amendment remain unchanged. And the clarification ensures accurate communication and record keeping with calpers. It will provide them with a clear understanding of our existing holiday pay practice for police officers. And we recommend that, uh, city council approve this amendment, uh, to the MOU. Uh, I'll stand for your push.
Questions, council? Saying done, all entertain the motion?
I'll make a motion to the group.
Got a motion from Miss Mendoza?
Second.
Second, Miss Bernwood, please vote.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Amparano?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you. Item C three, kept and approved project completion of Highway eighty-six, Fin's completion project from Texas to Marshall. Mr. Oton Mora, we need to go.
Sir, mayor, councilmembers, as you may already know, we secured funding through I C T C and I want to highlight by we. Sir, Mayor Amparano. My possible money. Uh, we were able to obtain that. Benz on eighty, Highway eighty-six from second street to Marshall Avenue. Uh, and we were also able to purchase additional. Also that, um, leaving on the table thirteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Separate mix of the overall finer contract amount, acceptance of one completed. And otherwise, take part, file notice of completion and we all stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions from the council?
Make a motion to the group.
That's what we do. True, on second, say, does it? Sir, Tucker? All right, um. I'll ask a question after, but please vote.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Amparano?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you. Um. The next step for this, are we gonna? Turn it over or how is that gonna work?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Working with the county.
Got you. That was the only question. Thank you very much. Well, thank you for all the hard work on that. Item C four, approval of commercial agreement between Quick Quack Car Wash and the City of Imperial Police Department. I'd say that that's like five times.
Yeah.
Good evening, mayor, council. Um, the proposal is to switch to a local vendor at Quick Quack Car Wash here. Quick Quack Car Wash here, you know, here in Imperial, the prior vendor we were using was Romeo's. You know, there's a couple motivating factors. One is cost savings. Overall. The contract monthly would be for the entirety of our fleet of seventeen vehicles and unlimited car washes if needed. The cost proposal is three hundred twenty-two dollars. We've done it, uh, two-year average, uh, using Romeo's. Which doesn't account for staff time to and from, and it's in excess of four hundred dollars per month. There's been significantly higher months and then some lower months. However, the average itself over the last two years is, is over four hundred dollars. So it's cost savings. And then the other distinct advantage is it allows for staff to work the graveyard shift because of the fact that it's open until nine P M. They can get their units washed without having to present responsibility out onto staff that works exclusively during the day. And then without.
Questions? Let's see the local.
Can we get staff to work on getting the rest of our fleet?
Yes.
Car options?
We are. Expansion to, uh, other departments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to the group.
Got a motion from Miss Mendoza?
Second.
Second from Miss Bernwood, please vote.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Amparano?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, with that, we'll move on to department reports. Mr. Mora? Okay, Mr. Dale?
See the intersection and turn out okay.
Okay. Keep my feelings.
So we're working on another thing. We were able to use the crack filling machine, and so we're starting to use that. Yeah, just trying to get our priorities for the, the coming months, or once we get the priorities. Move forward.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, that intersection does look great.
I appreciate you guys using the crack filling machine. It wasn't cheap and I don't think it is yet, if you realize, so. Thanks for getting to work on that.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Well, uh, it was, um, very well attended. Like you said, both teams, both kids in mind, were very, very hard on it. Thank you to them. Uh, and then. The next month, put it on your calendars, uh, May eight. Six to ten. Park will have me, uh, in the park after dark, so it's.
Six to ten?
Yeah, six to ten. And then we'll be having the last concert. Part of the series, uh, to end this, uh, for the year.
Thank you and, yeah, that was a great event. Very well attended. Chief?
So only one thing, um, perishable field training has come up again and it comes every two years for our staff, they're doing the driver awareness training. The most exciting, but they are maintaining their perishables.
So is that what's happening at the, uh, fairgrounds?
Yeah.
Awesome. Picked a great week, right? The hottest week?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, chief. Chief?
I just wanted to make a promise with the, with the dispatchers, uh, really are, are linked to the outside world when. Our, our folks are out there on the hall, the assistants, the cavalry come in. They're the reassuring voice on the other end of everything. Yeah, go your.
Thank you. Sir?
None to report this.
No?
Maybe next one's. Spikes is, I'll have to talk to our next, next one.
All right.
But then, uh, update, uh, keep doing.
Okay, thank you. All right, how about our city attorney? City clerk?
I do. I just.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Two weeks ago, I attended the City Clerks Association of California, um, conference and I just want to say I had a, a great time meeting other city clerks. And learning more about the city clerk world.
Miss Mendoza?
No.
Mr. Tucker?
Well, I went on an exciting trip with Robert and the city manager and the assistant city manager. To meet with our lobbyist and I learned a lot about grants. Now I just got to figure out how they're gonna ride them. Robert spoke at all of our meetings and he did an excellent job. And I hope he gets his wish and we get to start working on that park here soon because. He put a lot of labor into it, so I commend you. You did a good job.
Thank you.
And the city manager also spoke. That's, that's it. They did, all did an excellent job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Um, with that, yeah, I did attend the autism fair, like I mentioned earlier, it was great, great attendance, so, um. Lot of people, lot of people over, walking around, good music, good entertainment that they had on stage, so that was nice to see. Um. Like Mr. Tucker said, we did go to, just come back to D C on, on Washington, D C on Friday. Um, had several full days of meetings and we made full days of meetings, there were full days of meetings. Um, from, like Katie's been there and some of us have been there. It's your meeting from one end of the city to the next end of the city and, you know, you only got thirty minutes and you have twenty-three minutes to eat. And you're trying to scarf everything down because you're trying, you know, you gotta run that way, you gotta, still gotta get through security. Take everything off and then run through it and, yeah, it's, it's nuts, but, you know, we're hoping that, um. There's some good part of this that we can bring back some money, uh, to the city. Hopefully we can get that park grant back. Hopefully that we can, uh. There's one that we talked about with the arts district, that maybe we can get the arts district back and, and put a lot more into that. Um, that kind of reminds me like the, uh, with the rainforest project. So that's kind of that deal. And various other agencies that we met with, we met with cops, so funding for them, uh, we met funding for our, our parks area for community development. Just all the different departments, so nobody gets left out. So we're crossing our fingers as it comes through, so. Um, with that, uh. Wish everybody a good weekend. Stay cool because it's getting warm. So with that, I'll adjourn the meeting at seven forty.